Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I now call this agenda meeting of the Chattanooga City Council Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025, to order. Thank you for being with us, whether you're here in person or joining online. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation being led by Councilwoman Elliott.
One pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. We have two special presentations today. A joint proclamation honoring EPB and lost and electric workers presented by the one and only our Mayor Tim Kelly. And we also have a proclamation recognizing domestic violence Awareness Month by Councilwoman Jenny Burris. So I turn it over to you all.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you all for having me. It's my honor to be here with you today to present these proclamations. I, you know, as you well know, I don't come to council very often unless there's some very good reason to do so, but this is one of those days. Look, you know, you never know on any given day when you're going to be in need of a rescue or that you may be the one doing the rescuing. And that's what happened to Austin Camp and Brandon Shadwick, who were driving back from a lost and electric work site in Dalton when flash flooding hit our interstate. When the water started to rise and cars began to float, these two bolted into action, partnering with EPB worker Troy Plemons to get people out of their vehicles into higher ground. Their decisiveness to act, to put themselves in harm's way, and use the tools and the truck available to them saved lives that day, there's no doubt. So with that, I'd like to read the special proclamation. Got one for each of you. I'm gonna read the one. You got a cheat sheet, too. Whereas, on August 12th, 2025, the city of Chattanooga experienced significant flooding, presenting unprecedented challenges to our community and infrastructure. And whereas, throughout this challenging period, the dedicated employees of EPB and Lost and Electric Company demonstrated extraordinary commitment, courage, and professionalism in their tireless efforts to restore vital services and ensure public safety. And whereas, EPB and Lost and Electric employees worked diligently around the clock to address power outages, repair damaged infrastructure, and maintain the reliability of essential utilities often in hazardous conditions. And whereas, specifically, we recognize the heroic actions of EPB and Lost and Electric employees, notably Austin Camp, Troy Plemons, and Brandon Shadwick, who on August 12th, 2025, exemplifying true civic duty, rescued individuals trapped by rising floodwaters on I-24, risking their own safety to assist their fellow citizens. And whereas, these acts of selflessness and dedication are a testament to the unwavering spirit of service that defines our Chattanooga community and the vital role these organizations and their personnel play in our city's well-being. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Tim Kelly, Mayor of the City of Chattanooga and the Chattanooga City Council, do hereby jointly extend our deepest gratitude and commendation to Austin Camp, Troy Plemons, and Brandon Shadwick for their outstanding efforts, unwavering commitment, and heroic actions during the recent flooding events. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah. Maybe with council behind us, they're on this, too.
Well, everybody, thank you, Chairwoman, for allowing the opportunity for me to present this proclamation on behalf of the council and to keep it in the theme of saving lives and keeping people safe. I would like to present this proclamation today, the 2025 City Council Domestic Violence Proclamation. Whereas, the family is the foundation of a safe and healthy community, and it is the goal of this mayoral administration for our community to be safe. And whereas, domestic violence impacts individuals in every community regardless of age, economic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality, in which children are also affected, one in three women and one in four men have experienced physical violence by an intimate partner. And whereas, more than half of the crimes against persons in Tennessee are domestic violence related, research shows that domestic violence is often a root cause of other crimes such as mass shootings, gun violence. And whereas, within the city of Chattanooga, we have experienced more than 1,417 domestic violence incidents so far this year of 2025. And whereas, while domestic violence is not always revealed as physical abuse, it is also any pattern of behaviors that attempts to control and intimidate a partner or family member through fear, manipulation, isolation, financial abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, stalking, mental abuse, and/or verbal abuse. While physical injury with visible damage may often be the most obvious signs of offense, the effect of emotional, psychological, social, and spiritual trauma is much deeper, and we can have lifelong consequences for survivors and their families. And whereas, as we as leaders in this community realize that family is the foundation and the core of a safe and healthy community, and ending domestic violence requires a combined effort involving every part of our society, including law enforcement and our justice system, to work together to hold offenders accountable and to protect and empower survivors and their children to create pathways to hope and safety. And whereas, the Dr. Carol B. Burris Family Justice Center served 905 victims in 2024, 2025, and provided 250 trainings and events. Together with their co-located partner organizations, there is help to hold offenders accountable and reduce recidivism while helping to ensure justice, victim safety, and healing. And whereas, during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we affirm our dedication to forging a community where no one suffers the pain and hardship that domestic violence causes, and we recommit to doing all that is within our power to uphold the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse. And whereas, we dedicate ourselves to create a community where domestic violence is not tolerated, where survivors are supported, where offenders are held accountable, and where all people have an opportunity to thrive without fear of violence or abuse. And whereas, last but not least, we dedicate this proclamation in the memory of Dr. Carol B. Burris, recognizing her as a staunch advocate for victims in our community and a visionary leader whose steadfast support advanced the mission of the Family Justice Center and strengthened the work of our partners. Her legacy of compassion, justice, and collaboration continues to guide and inspire us all. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in us, we, the Chattanooga City Council, do hereby proclaim 2025, October 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call on all citizens to know the power of "we" as one Chattanooga to observe and speak out against domestic violence and support efforts of law enforcement, the justice system, advocates, service providers, healthcare providers, and the leadership of survivors to end domestic violence. In witness whereof, we are here unto set our hands and cause to the seal of Chattanooga to be fixed this seventh day of October 2025. I present this to Regina McDevitt, the Executive Director of the Family Justice Center, and I think she has a few words to add as well.
Thank you. June. June. Yes, yes. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman Burris. I would just like to take a moment to recognize our staff and partners that are in the room with us. If you guys would stand up. We couldn't do this work without the partners that we have in the community and the staff that we have at the Family Justice Center. Thank you. I want to thank all the members of the City Council for the opportunity just to speak for a few moments today. This is the first time I've been here since Dr. Burris was, has no longer been with us and from last year, and so this is very meaningful. So thank you, Gina. Each October, we come together to raise awareness about domestic violence. It's a crisis that touches everyone, one in three women, one in four men in our country. This year, we dedicated our recognition to Dr. Burris, whose vision, leadership, and relentless advocacy made the Family Justice Center a reality 10 years ago. Her legacy lives on through every survivor who finds safety, every child who experiences peace, and every partnership that grows stronger because of her commitment to this city. On average, the Family Justice Center serves about 1,000 people each year. Our partners serve multiple thousands, which just increases the impact that we make with that throughout the community. Last year, we mentioned that we had 250 outreach and training opportunities, helping our community recognize, respond, and prevent abuse in our community. We also hosted a multi-faith workshop in collaboration with 10 other faith groups, and our upcoming 10th Annual Conference this year is on domestic violence in the workplace, which will be October the 24th. And it's addressing how employers, coworkers, and communities can support safety and prevention where we live and work. This year, the FJC staff also presented at two national conferences and four state conferences, bringing the spirit of Chattanooga, of one Chattanooga throughout the country, which is really important. We continue to mentor other communities across Tennessee, seeking to replicate the collaborative model that we have here at the Family Justice Center. Domestic violence is not only a public safety issue, but it is also a workplace and public health issue. Every year, victims lose an estimated 8 million days of paid work, costing the U.S. businesses over $1.8 billion in lost productivity. Between 21% and 60% of victims lose their jobs because of the abuse, and nearly half of working survivors report being harassed at work by their abuser. The healthcare cost per victim averages more than $80,000 over a lifetime, contributing to a $3.6 trillion national economic burden. That is so horrible and amazing at the same time how much we have an opportunity to prevent an impact. These numbers remind us that the impact of violence reaches far beyond the home, and it affects every part of our community. The FJC campus is home to 13 onsite partners and more than 20 offsite partners, working side by side to support victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, elder abuse, and child abuse. Looking ahead this coming year, we will be honored to host Casey Gwynn, who is the President of the Alliance for Hope International. He is an internationally recognized leader on family justice centers, and he will facilitate our five-year strategic planning process. Together with our partners, we will continue to envision growth, strengthen services, and expand support for survivors and families across Chattanooga. Finally, I invite everyone to join us for our Survivor and Victim Candlelight Vigil on October 30th at 6 o'clock at the Hamilton County Courthouse lawn, as we honor the lives of those who've been lost to domestic violence and celebrate the strength and resilience of survivors. Most importantly, this work that we do is possible because of you and our mayor's office. The financial support from the city of Chattanooga makes it possible for the Family Justice Center and our partners to serve victims and families every day, to help them find safety, rebuild their lives, and rediscover hope. So on behalf of our staff, our partners, and the thousands of survivors that we have served, thank you for your steadfast support and for continuing to make Chattanooga a city that stands for safety, justice, and hope. Thank you.
Regina, I want to thank you for all that you do and all that your staff does. I also want to let the council know that both mayors were represented yesterday. They did a proclamation, joint proclamation, at the Hamilton County Courthouse, and the city hall is going to be lit up purple this week in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So thank you, Regina, for all that you do to keep this active and keep our community engaged.
Thank you.
Yeah. You want to take a picture real quick? Yeah, take a picture. Can you take a picture? The staff is going to pass around some purple ribbons. We would appreciate anybody wearing your purple ribbon all month. Thank you, I can't talk, in honor of this Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Kelly, and thank you, Councilwoman Burris. Councilman Clark, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you for the permission to allow my guests to join me at the distinguished diocese today. Today, I'm joined by Henry, I'll wait till the room resets. Okay, I'll proceed with the rest of our council business today. Madam Chair and Council, today I'm joined by Henry Dunbar from Grand Rapids, Michigan. He is currently a senior at Covenant College studying education and pre-law. He plans to attend law school soon. He's been shadowing me today. Thank you to the mayor's office and the mayor and the mayor's team, Kim Strong, who provided him with a swag bag. He had the opportunity to meet with our deputy chief of staff in the back, Darren. We had lunch, we've met some of our council people, and he's interested in public policy, Madam Chair. So thank you again for welcoming him and for running around with me all day. Sure was a learning lesson. So be, just give a warm Chattanooga welcome to Henry. Thank you, Madam Chair, you're back.
You are so welcome, Councilman, and welcome, Henry. Council family, you have received the minutes from the last meeting. If there is any correction, please let me know if you're light. All right, seeing none, then may I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Second.
I have a motion with a proper second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved and submitted. All right, council family, let's take a look at our agenda for today. We'll start out with ordinances and final reading. If you have any questions or concerns, please hit your light. Public works and police underneath. Orders for first readings, we have none. Under resolutions, we have council office, economic development, mayor's office. Any questions or concern, please hit your lights. Oh, okay, this is good. Thank you. All right, we cooking with Crisco here. Yes. All right, no questions or concerns. Okay, let's take a look at the purchases, if you will direct your attention to those. Any questions or concern, please hit your light. Okay, moving on. Please take a look at next week's proposed agenda. So any questions or concern, please hit your light there. I would also like to let you know, if you have any questions as forward planning, it's concerned if you would hold those, because we do have a planning and zoning meeting Any questions or concerns? All right. Ooh. Okay, so let's take a look at future considerations. Any questions or concern, you know the routine, hit your light. Okay, anything? All right. Ooh, okay. So if there's no other questions for the proposed agenda, other than planning? Councilman Clark?
I'm so sorry, just for clarity, during the planning committee meeting, is that the appropriate time to? I know usually that committee time is used for presentations, but for discussion purposes, like the intent of how we would like to move, is that the appropriate time to discuss it during the committee meeting?
It is.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is back on future consideration. This is for...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you speak up.
This is for future consideration.
Okay.
This is for police. Chief, I don't know if you have the answer for this. I know we unfortunately lost one of our K-9 officers in the line of duty, and I appreciate their service, and my heart goes out to that handler and the rest of CPD. I see in this grant we're looking to accept from this foundation for vests, is this for K-9 vests? And let me ask you this, do our K-9 officers currently, the K-9s, not just officers, but do they currently have vests now, or is there any other protection that we can provide them in the future to make sure we're best supporting them going forward?
Yes, sir, they do. So the grant is for a replacement K-9 and a vest if needed.
Okay.
So if, you know, depending on the size of the dog, typically when we get them, they're either right at or under two years old.
Okay.
So they're pups, they still got a lot of growing to do.
Okay.
So, you know, depending on the overall size of the dog, then that will determine, you know, if we need to get a new one for it or if we can use one that we already have.
Okay, we, they do have vests, okay. Thank you, Chief. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions or concern? Okay, seeing none, then I will turn it over to Councilwoman Burris for Planning and Zoning Committee meeting.
I'd like to call to order this week's planning and zoning... I'd like to call to order this week's Planning and Zoning Committee. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. We'll move forward with the agenda. Karen, would you like to come forward? I know since, I hope all of you've gotten your notes in your folder today. Since these were printed, I think that Karen had received some updates on some of these matters, so I think the ones that are highlighted in yellow, gosh, y'all, I can't talk today. Okay, let's try this again. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are the items that she was planning to go over. Is there anything else on this list that you all want to hear more about? So Karen, do you want to start by just talking about the ones that we don't need to discuss that you've already, that were highlighted originally?
Sure. One item is D, which is case 2025-0134, and this was a rezoning on Dayton Boulevard. I put in the notes that we'd had a verbal request to withdraw, but we have had, the paperwork has been submitted, so that is a formal request by the applicant to withdraw that zoning case. I think there's been a change in the purchase method for that one.
Okay.
And then item F, which is the 2025-0124, a rezoning on Murray Hills Drive. There's been a lot of activity with this, and I want to fire to Councilman Clark for any updates if you'd like.
Absolutely. Thank you, Karen. We have met several times with Alan Jones, who's the consultant for the property owner of that case, and they have requested until further notice a 60-day deferral for additional coordination, which basically means they need to go to the proper protocol and engage in the community about this particular, I guess it would be described, I don't know if it's a storage unit condos, is that correct, Karen?
It's correct.
So there needs to be a little bit more education and buy-in from the neighborhood about what that is. It's not congruent with their plan, the Planned Chattanooga plans. I can't, I can't lie to you with that. So we're going to defer that for further due diligence to make sure that that is something that we want in that area, because it's not congruent with plan.
And Madam Chair, I won't plan on presenting then, because it sounds like there might be some updates, and we'll get it on one of the next Planning and Zoning Committees.
Okay. That sounds good. So you don't need a presentation?
No presentation for that. Thank you.
Yes. So the next one is actually in District 6. This one is one that we, I am still working on with the property owner and with RPA. We're looking at some other options. Right now, you'll see the note of the recommendation to deny by the Planning Commission, and we're looking for some other avenues in hopes to work with this, the property owner and the business owner that had originally requested this. So I'm going to request that we not have a presentation on this one as well, because there's still more to come.
Okay. And so again, the case 132 didn't have opposition, and we're not hitting the ones that didn't have opposition or have recommendations to approve. The next case that was flagged was item J, 2025-0128. This is a rezoning on East 14th Street, and this comes with a staff and Planning Commission recommendation to deny. The applicant was not at Planning Commission. Diane called both the numbers and spoke to someone who said acknowledged they understood that this was going to be on council agenda next week. So we hope that the applicant is here at this time. But just briefly, this is a rezoning for a proposed uses. Yes, sir?
Can we have it put on the screen, please?
So we're looking at item, can you all activate the screen so we can see what? Yeah, we got it. Thank you.
So this is a rezoning on East 14th Street, proposed uses, office laundry mat or coffee shop. And the rezoning is from the R15 residential neighborhood zone to the CN neighborhood commercial zone. And I'll kind of just, kind of this, I think the zoning map itself kind of shows the recommendation from staff to deny. The main street is that commercial corridor to the south of this property, so main street's kind of that mix of institutional and commercial uses. This is a half block north of there. It's surrounded on either side and to the north by residentially zoned property. The plan recommends that it remain a residential use, and some of the staff notes that the site is difficult to introduce commercial uses because of the required landscaping buffers on the small lot, and proposed parking is blocking the sidewalk, and vehicles cannot back out, some just kind of operational. Their request is not compatible with the plan, and that commercial neighborhood zone permits commercial uses are not compatible with adjacent residential land uses. But generally, unless it's supported by the plan introducing a commercial zone mid-block is not recommended. And then staff noted that although not requested, there's a series of zones, five zones in fact, that allow missing middle housing would introduce additional housing options here that would meet the place type recommendations in the plan, just if the applicant was thinking about a future use. There's maybe some other uses besides commercial that would meet planned recommendations. So there was an opposition at Planning Commission, but Planning Commission is recommending to deny also, and again, we have reminded the applicant the public hearing next week.
Thank you. Councilman Elliott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Karen. Even if this, I don't know if this person is here. Are they here? Okay. Well, I haven't heard from this person, and I will let it be known again that I have a rule. I need you to come talk to me as the councilperson, and then talk to your neighborhood association. So if you are here or watching, you have not done either, so we'll move as accordingly.
Karen, we can call Mr. Morales if there was some confusion about the process, just to also remind him that that should have been told to him. We've been handing a little card out with every zoning sign that reminds folks to call their councilperson.
And I'll say this, I know your office does a very good job of telling people that. I'll let anybody else know, you need to do your due diligence to talk to me and your neighbors before we rezon anything. And so if Mr. Morales does not respond, if he does, great, I hope he's ready. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I see no other lights on. Any other questions about this case? Okay, we can move on to the next matter.
Okay, we have two zoning ordinance amendments. The first is an amendment to the short-term vacation rental map. So short-term vacation rental standards are in the zoning ordinance, and it references the map, and the map is on file with Clark's office and also available online. This is at the request of Councilman Clark, initiated by Councilman Clark. This is an extension of the short-term vacation rental overlay down Shawhand Road in the North Brainerd area. So this is picking up properties that have vehicular access to Shawhand, so that's why it's a little bit, it carves out if you're facing another street, you're not part of this boundary, and so this is an extension of that existing boundary, and this did go to Planning Commission with a recommendation to approve. But this is only amending the map, none of the other requirements of the short-term vacation rental section.
Okay. Councilman Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Chairwoman Burris. I was going to reiterate that it's only for this particular stretch off of Shawhand. Our district historically has been very restrictive with short-term vacation rentals. I do want to add to the record that the applicant who requested this did get unanimous consensus of our neighborhood association and the signatures of all of her neighbors on Shawhand. And as it stands, this will probably be the only time I would consider a short-term vacation rental overlay in my district. This was a special consideration, given that it is owner occupied with an additional ADU unit attached to this home, and the owner is on property, which is required for residential. But anyway, I just want to make sure that was in the note, and I approve this for this particular street, and so does the neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilman Elliott?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, can you, or someone from your office, give me a copy of the SCBR overlay?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what my district looks like, but I would like to be a little bit more familiar with it.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Karen, will you go ahead and send that to Nicole so we can all see that?
I will.
It would be probably good information for all of us. Thank you.
Yes. We'll get the, this, we'll add that, and then once this is added in, we can send an updated map. And this is, should give credit to the city's GIS team, is the one that's been mapping this, and they're the ones that are kind of the holder of that, so appreciative of their efforts.
Fantastic.
And then we have one more ordinance amendment. Again, this is kind of tracking as we've been working with the new ordinance, and then it's been enforced and working through LDO. We have two items that were requested by LDO. The first one is an amendment to the Form-based Code. So the amendment, this talks about doing things cumulatively. You could do something 25% cumulatively, but someone would come in one year, and it's 25%, the next year's 25%, the next year's 25%. So the third paragraph here is to basically say, you can't keep doing that. At some point, you've exceeded the intent, and so this language then is a five-year period in which a cumulative percentage of improvements equal exceeds 50% of the current market value. So this is intended to get a little bit around the work, to get to the workaround of every year a 25% improvement to not trigger changes. And so this was at the request, and the language was developed by LDO.
Any questions? Your light's still on, but that was just from Councilman Elliott. You have no other questions?
I may have one about this later.
Okay. There is a second part, so that might, to the zoning ordinance amendment, we also have a landscape buffer table. In using the table, LDO flagged that it appears that the headers maybe got mixed in with the text of the table, so this is a cleanup of the table. It should not change the way it is, should not change the standard itself, or change the way it's been reviewed or permitted. It's just a cleanup to the table, to be clear, for really anyone reading it to understand what the intent is.
Is there a typo of, I'm sorry, the lawyer is coming out?
It is a typo. I see the, it's supposed to have gotten removed, the two extra parentheses and add the A. So yes, it is correct in the ordinance, but yes, thank you for that. I'll correct that.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
I see no other lights. Any other questions for Karen about this one? Okay. Karen, I do want to backtrack to the first page and item G, and I would, I may ask Jack McAfee if he can come and make a presentation, because I think it's a worthwhile project that they're doing at the library, so I'll take on that responsibility to contact him, even though...
On the airport open space?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, there's no opposition, but it's a neat project that the airport's doing with that park space, and I would love for him to have the opportunity to showcase it.
And I love the idea of it's using our new zone, our new open space zone, which is pretty exciting.
Okay. All right, well, good. I wanted to run that past you before I reached out to him.
And may I mention, we have three resolutions, and I'm not going to speak to them specifically, but since I brought up the new zoning code a couple times, we have a new planned unit development, a new PUD process, which we've only had one application so far. The resolutions on the agenda are amending existing PUDs, so they are, because they have vested rights, we are amending those PUDs. It's not the new PUDs coming through yet. These are just tidying up some of the, addressing some items in older PUDs, but none of them had opposition.
Okay, great. Councilman Clark, I see your light?
Yes, Chairwoman Burris. Back to item G?
Yes.
I'd noticed that it's in both districts. I thought all of the airport was in District 6, and what part, is a part on the Lehigh Way side where that entryway is, or?
Let's get a picture.
And if we have the district wrong, I'm sure that's our fault, and whether it was, the airport has really large parcels, so it could be it's picking up a portion somewhere, but I can double-check that. Miss, if I have a better picture of that?
Oh, I see the airport road.
Yeah.
That's actually a good question, because I do have portions of Airport Road, so yeah...
It's on the end closest to Shalaford Road, so the back part of the, so the runway that's on the Shalaford Road end of Airport Road.
Correct. So the part, there's a driveway off of Airport Road?
They actually just created a driveway next to the West Star, right before West Star, so you can't, so you see West Star up top, I mean, you see the dump up top?
Yes.
Okay. They go down, they created this more permanent driveway. It was gravel and rough, but they've actually paved it to go into this park area, and it's a really unique space. They got a grant from Blue Cross, and they're going to have an old airplane there where kids can go in and play in it, and they're, it's going to be, and it's, for those of you that grew up in Chattanooga, the airport, and I'm aging myself, the airport used to have an observation deck, and this brings back that observation area
Oh, wow.
for people to go, and they're going to have outrun deck chairs where you can sit and you can watch planes land, and they're going to have a play space. It is safe, even though it's right, you're kind of surprised, because you're right there at the edge of the runway, but it is a safe space, and there's all kinds of opportunity to further develop some walking trails back in the woods behind there, so I think it'll, I would love for Jack to make that presentation.
Oh, yeah, I look forward to the presentation.
And I'm sure he would love to give everybody a tour, because this is his baby, so...
Well, in that case, Karen, this is District 5. Go ahead and claim it, start with some car back parts of the airport in District 5.
I think those trees back there.
We'll take the park. We'll take the park.
Yeah.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Councilman Elliott?
Do we know if the airport or any of the security mechanisms have reviewed, reviewed what this looks like as well, from a security standpoint? Because it sits right there by the runways.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. It is going to, it is going to be totally fenced in, so it's not like somebody can just, you know, run out on the runway. It is going to be a protected zone, and I will, I'll ask that of Jack, the person that I'd like to come and make a presentation, so that he can explain to us just the full scope of the project, because this is only the beginning if it's, there's lots of property behind there where some other activity space could be created for that end of, that area of District 5 and District 6, which would serve much more than those two districts. But I think it, I think that's a great question.
And we did follow, I'm sorry, we did follow up, and it's not in the, it's outside the flight path, so it felt like that made it more safe.
And let me ask you this, and I don't know if this is a question for you, or if it's somebody from administration knows this, are there any plans for runway expansion for the airport?
That I do not know, but we could find out. I imagine we could find out, unless there's anybody in administration that would know the answer to that. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll throw myself on this one. No, we don't know anything about any expansion of runways. We can ask the airport and get back to you on that, but that, the airport makes those decisions internally, so we would have no, nothing to do with that decision.
Okay. I'm just curious about long-term planning. You know, I love the idea of this park, but you know, it's a huge economic component for Chattanooga, so I'm curious, how does that play with each other? But if you could, I would appreciate it.
I've seen Air Force One land on the runway, so it's probably long enough for what they need, but I'll be happy to reach out to them.
Depends on who's in the plane.
All right. Any other lights, any other questions? Was there anything else you need from us right now, Karen?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, as always, for all that you do and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I call for a motion to adjourn this meeting. What time do you move?
Point of origin.
Just recess, we don't adjourn.
Okay. Skates, thank you for that.
Okay. We have a firm decline, so give us 25 minutes, so we will convene at 4:30.
All right. We will recess till 4:35. Thank you all.
We are back in session. Madam Clerk, will you? Okay, where she go?
It's on microphone.
Okay, we'll wait for Madam Clerk. Oh, she had to get it. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We are back in session. Madam Clerk, are you ready yet?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you read ordinances on the final reading? If the council family is okay with it, I will take this as a package on the Public Works and Police. Do read as a package, thank you.
Item A. An ordinance closing and abandoning a portion of an unopened right-of-way in the 7200 block of Noah Reed Road as detailed on the attached map subject to certain conditions. Item B, an ordinance amending Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 16, Section 1654, relative to charges for fingerprints and record checks.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a proper second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Madam Clerk, if you would, there is no reading on the first reading on the ordinances, but if we go into resolution and if it's okay with the council family again here on the council office, I will take A and B as a package.
Item A. A resolution confirming the appointment of Victoria Johnson to the Board of Zoning Appeals for District 6 with a term beginning on October 8, 2025 and ending on October 7, 2028. Item B, a resolution confirming the appointment of Pam Foster to the Head Start Governing Board for District 7 for a term beginning on October 8, 2025 and ending on October 7, 2027.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We'll have a motion with a proper second. Are there any questions or concerns? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Madam Clerk, on the Economic Development, item C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Chattanooga delegating to the Health, Educational and Housing Facility Board of the City of Chattanooga, Tennessee, the authority to negotiate and accept payments in lieu of outlawing taxes with respect to the 702 Manufacturers Row Project to be undertaken by the Atlantic Companies LLC or an affiliate thereof and to be located in the city of Chattanooga, Tennessee, and find that such payments are deemed to be in furtherance of the public purposes of the Health, Educational and Housing Facility Board of the City of Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Councilman Henderson? Okay, we have a motion with a proper second. Are there any questions or concerns? All in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Madam Clerk, item D.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator of Economic Development to enter into an office leased with Street Grace Inc. and substantially the form attached for 106 square feet of office space and a portion of the Dr. Carol B. Burr's Family Justice Center at 5705 Altona Road identified as tax map number 157 MA 012 for a term of four years for the amount of $1 annually.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor with a proper second. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item, Madam Clerk under the Mayor's Office, item E.
A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Cedric Henson as Administrator of Community Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a proper second. Any questions or concerns? If so, hit your light. Mr. Henderson? Your light is on, you good? Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, Councilman Elliott? Okay.
Cedric, I'm really excited for you to officially step into this role. I know the job is steep, but you have our support and I wish you and the rest of your staff well and everything to come in the near future. And I'll say the rest for Councilman Clark.
No? Okay.
Madam Chair, ready for the vote. Motion to approve.
We already have that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, welcome. Speech.
You asked for that.
That's the, that's the speech I want to hear.
Ten seconds.
We are record pace, so I will not slow it down. I, I would like to thank the Mayor's Office. I would like to thank the council just for your trust and confidence. Community development, it's, it's power in that title. I'm looking forward with the professionals that are part of that department to continue to improve the, the city. So, so thank you and let's get to work.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, on the Mayor's Office. If council family is okay, I would like to take F, G and H as a package.
Item F. A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's reappointment of Randall Smith to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term beginning on September 29, 2025 and ending on September 28, 2029. Item G, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's reappointment of David Norby to the Board of Electrical Examiners for a term beginning on November 17, 2025 and ending on November 16, 2029. Item H, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Maria Graff to the Chattanooga Housing Authority for a term beginning on October 8, 2025 and ending on October 7, 2030.
May I have a motion?
Second.
So we have a motion with a proper second. Are there any questions or concerns? If so, hit your light. Councilman Elliott, are you, is that previous?
That's previous, like me.
Okay, thank you. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Thank you. If you would, Madam Clerk, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Debbie, if you will come on up for purchases, please.
Good evening, council.
Hello.
Three purchases recommended for approval this evening. The first one is for fleet. This is a one-time purchase of a Ford F-550 for wastewater. Initially, only one bid was received. The invitation was re-advertised resulting in one additional bid. The award will go to Thompson Truck Group, DBA, Lee Smith Company in the amount of $95,866 as the best bid for the city of Chattanooga. Number two is for fire. This is a one-time purchase of a Schmil 107-foot Ariel Quint fire truck. The award will go to Spartan Fire in the amount of $1,841,146. This purchase is utilizing a Sourcewell contract. Number three is for Public Works. Year three, American Paper and Twine has requested a 4% increase and Jacob's Paper has requested a 16% increase for paper products due to the increase in manufacturing costs. The new estimated annual spend will be $109,000. Public Works has approved this increase.
So we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or concerns? Hit your light. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? It passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We've come to the point of our meeting where we have to give our committee reports. And we'll start with Councilman Henderson. Thank you. Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to congratulate our interim now-permanent Administrator for the Department of Community Development. Thank you, Cedric, for going through those gruesome but necessary monthly committee meetings. They will resume, starting this, probably starting next month. I think, oh no, starting in October because I think there's some amazing things and projects that I know that you're working on in relation to the community hubs that I know is a priority of the mayor. So thank you again for accepting this position and the task of making this department a wonderful department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Councilman Elliott? Councilwoman Dotley? Councilwoman Burrus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Committee and went over some of the cases that still had some questions and needed more information. And all of these cases will be heard if they weren't withdrawn for some reason at our next council meeting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And last but not least, I don't actually have a report, but I do need to give you all a reminder that October the 14th, the council business meeting will begin at 2:00 PM in lieu of National Night Out. So we give every council person an opportunity to get whatever neighborhood associations that will be participating in National Night Out. And the only other thing I would like to say, if I may have 15 seconds here, is that okay, council family? Okay. So if you said no, I'm gonna do it anyway.
We don't.
So you know, as I sit in this chair for the month of October, I just want to make it known to our council family that we are not, and I will repeat, we are not and we will not be oil and water. We will work together harmonious. We will make sure we take care of every business for every district so that the city as a whole will benefit from it. So you know, we bring a, each one of us up here has different abilities and assets and a mindset and, and knowledge that we can bring forth. So we just want to all be on one accord and do what is best for the city as a whole. So our table stay full and it's always going to be welcoming to any of those that want to come. So thank you all for the opportunity for my chair in my first meeting. And preferably I did you well. And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, woo. I jumped it in. Okay, back it up. All right, is there anyone here? Yes. An attorney, if you will read the rules and regulations. If it's anyone else, please line up.
Yes, ma'am. At the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council. Anybody wishing to speak can be recognized only at the microphone provided up front for that purpose. Can't have more than three minutes to speak and address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority and not on matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Do not engage in any vulgar or obscene language nor use it for to personally attack or personally denigrate others and address your comments to the council as a whole, not towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting, which is prohibited by Tennessee law. And someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with the meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, Ms. Janice.
Janice Gooden from the great District 8.
Yes.
I don't always stay for the second meeting and I see that we still might get out of here before five o'clock, so. But it's, it's good when people work together and collaborate. So I want to give a commendation to community development, particularly the community center in Avondale, Gerald Perry, as well as Early Learning, Caritza. You may be aware that there was a fire at the Avondale Head Start Building. So when I went to the center with the seniors, for which I am one, last week I saw all these people and it was a lot of activity and I come to find out that they had to move over from the Head Start or Early Learning to the Avondale Center. And they came up with a plan and it worked well and it's still working. So we don't always hear the good. Sometimes we just hear the bad, so. Just wanted to give commendation for them working together. And congratulations to Cedric.
All right, is there anyone else? So council family, seeing no one else, may I now have a motion to adjourn? So we have a motion with a proper second. All those, I'm just messing with you. All those in favor say yeah. Oppose? We are adjourned.